Please note that all councilors are here. At this time, we will have a presentation by the Metropolitan District Commission.
Thank you very much, thank you for the invitation. We're going to give the Cliff Notes version of the presentation. Weatherfield was two hours, Windsor it was hour and a half, so we're going to try and stick to a half hour. And this will be interesting. So everybody has a copy of the presentation. We also have a two-and-a-half-page sheet that outlines the budget which you all received today, and we've given that to our commissioners. Just want to acknowledge the Chairman, Commissioner DeBella, Commissioner Taylor, and Commissioner Lester. Both of our commissioners from Bloomfield are very supportive of your town and the needs of the MDC community. So I'm going to get right to it. And I'm going to go, I think it's this hour? No? Yep, there we go. So I am not going to get into much detail here. Only this just shows that these are all of the meetings that we try to hold. It's for transparency. To the left is the number of meetings we had with our town managers and in the workshops, with our public workshops, with our commissioners. And here is the schedule, the last being December 2nd, which is where the Board would approve the budget. Again, I'm not going to go through all these in detail, but I'm going to pick out some of the highlights, and I know my Chairman is going to want to talk about this later, but things that we, you know, we have zero control over, like the town of Bloomfield and all of our towns, is things like OPEB. And we all know, you're probably the leaders in, for our eight towns, in funding OPEB liability, the MDC is just getting started. We have been pay-as-you-go for a long time, spent about $10 million a year, and it's time for us to develop an OPEB trust fund as the Bloomfield has. The other one is things like resolving impasses with the state of Connecticut and not receiving approximately $11 million in funding and that the state owes the MDC and our eight-member towns on the discharge of groundwater. So there's a lot of other things here, I'm not going to get into them, but we will, if you have any questions, we'll have to answer. This is the most important thing. So there's been a lot of discussion about our rate increase. There was an article, as you know, last week in the paper. And this is the really important thing. The overall rate increase by the MDC for water services, which the residents pay for and the businesses pay for directly, and the clean water surcharge, which is an unfunded mandate that the state of Connecticut and EPA insist we perform $3 billion, as well as the Avalorm increase, the sewer and water services to our customers is only a 4.3% increase, okay? So there's multiple line items in everyone's budget, and you can pick out something that says, "Well, this line item is an increase, the water rate, an increase of 14%." But the overall increase from the MDC is 4.3%, and that's a fact. The numbers, you have all of them. The Avalorm increase, which the towns pay for, as you can see, is 6.9%, which is down at the bottom here, is the bottom right-hand corner, and this is, I don't know if it's showing up on the screen, but the bottom right-hand corner basically is 6.9%. Last year, our Avalorm increase to the towns was almost 8%. So we're actually lower in a percentage increase than last year. On the top of the screen here, the water rate is, and I'm going to go to the next slide, the water rate is only one item on the water bill. So there's four components to the water bill. In a member town, as you can see, there's the water charge, which is the water rate. There's the clean water surcharge, which is, on an average home, $410 of a $1,000 bill. No one else in the state of Connecticut, no one else in New England, has a $400 bill on their water bill. And again, that's a mandate by the state of Connecticut, the federal government, so to compare us to others, it's not fair to compare when you include that cost of the clean water project. So when you look at the water rate, even though there's a 14% increase in the rate itself, there's really only a 6.23% increase in the water bill. And that's approximately $5.25 per month. This is just in talking about, so we have, just like your electric bill, you have fixed charges on your electric bill, and then you have what you actually consume for electricity. We're no different. We have fixed charges, we have fixed revenue, customer service charges, and then we have the rest of the revenue. And 70, the large orange portion of this pie chart, 70%, 69% of our revenue is from water sales. So if water sales go down, then MDC's expenses are not going up by 14%. Our water sales are going down by almost 4%, and so therefore we have to raise the rate by 14% to make up the difference in the revenue. But our expenses did not go up by 14%. And again, it's all dictated by how much water people use. And I showed you that $410. Think about how that $410, which has nothing to do with the water system, has nothing to do with the sewer system, that $410 is mandated by the state of Connecticut and EPA, "We must do this." But when you add that on to someone's water bill, guess what happens? People use less water. And when you lose less water, you wind up losing revenue. When you lose revenue, you have to raise the rate. So the challenge that the MDC has is, most of our customers, most of our towns are already built out. There's a little bit going on in Maygoon, in Windsor, a little bit in Bloomfield, Great Ponds development, but most of our acreage is built out. And so there's not going to be a lot of development that's going to create a lot of additional water consumption over the next number of years. As you, we're talking about a possibility in 10 years of facing a pay-as-you-go OPEB, which is $9 million this year, and then planning to put away $5 million a year, $5 million a year for OPEB. And we all face that reality. You'd have to, you know, $5 million a year in additional expenses on OPEB, you'd have to sell another $5 million gallons a day just to make up that $5 million. And it's not out there. You know, it's not out there by development, residential. The only opportunity is commercial. This is just another slide, which I'm going to skip, but it's just a typical water bill, and it just breaks down what I already talked about. You know, it's very unfair for the MDC to be, you know, the article in the paper, there was a number of legislatures that claimed that we should be regulated. This is a chart of the MDC comparing ourselves to regulated water utilities. So if the answer is to be regulated, that means you want to pay more. If you look at this first chart, MDC, our water rate today is $3.50 per CCF. Aquarion, private water utility, regulated by the state of Connecticut, $4.23. Connecticut Water, another regulated water utility, $6.76. And then Regional Water Authority, which is identical to the MDC, in New Haven, created by the state of Connecticut, are identical, except all they do is water. Their rate is $4.40. So we're a dollar, 90 cents less per CCF than our sister agency in New Haven, and yet we need to be regulated. It doesn't make any sense. This is just another chart here that shows the breakdown between us and Regional over the last four years. When our rate goes up to $4.01 next year, we're still cheaper than Regional, right This is a comparison, the same numbers we just used, is simply comparison of what the water bill is total, with all of the fees and all the charges associated with producing water. And again, for the year, the MDC is $580, and you can see the numbers, the regulated utilities are double. So the answer is, does MDC, do you want the MDC to be regulated so we can double the rates? I don't think that's the answer for our towns. This is just an analysis, as we talked about, the, over the course of the last 20 years, and through regulation, EPA has mandated that you can only buy a certain type of washing machine, dishwasher, faucet, showerhead, and it's low-flow, you cannot, you don't waste water, right? So if a top-loading washing machine used 40 gallons per load, a front-loading washing machine uses nine. So one appliance in one home just cut your water consumption by 75%, right? 50%. So there's things that we can't control, we can't control that. Reducing our water rate, someone would suggest you reduce the water rate and people use more water. Well, I know my wife uses probably three to four loads of laundry a day with four children, and if the water rate's cheaper, she's not going to do more laundry, right? So the industry, the regulators have already decided, across the country, water consumption is going down 2% a year, and it has not bottomed out. We're no different. We're about 3.6, almost 4% lower than expected in this past year, and that's driving the 14% increase. Again, I just showed you how we're lower than our sister agency in New Haven, we're half the price of the regulated utilities, which some would say we should be regulated. Here's a dirty little secret. The MDC, the way in which we charge for fire protection, we charge our towns. So within our budget, our water budget, and let's just pick a number, our water budget's about $95 million. Our revenue that we receive from our towns is about $1.5 million a year. But if you look at these numbers, and you can't see it, but the top chart to the far right, Connecticut Water is receiving about $8.9 million a year in revenue, because they charge, not just for the hydrant, they charge per linear foot of pipe in your town. So Aquarion, $6 million. Regional Water, our sister agency, just like us, they charge $5.4 million. So when you think about, they're getting a revenue to help reduce their rate. Imagine if they charged the way we charge, their water rate would be a dollar more than it is right now. So we could do that. We could charge the way they charge for fire protection, and we would say to the town, "You don't owe us $125, $135 per hydrant anymore. You owe us millions," right? "We don't want to do that to our towns." I don't think we can justify it. I don't know how they justify it, but they do, through regulators, through PURA. How does Connecticut Water and Aquarion, through PURA, regulate and justify $8.9 million for fire protection? We have our non-member towns, South Windsor and Farmington, and those two towns are unique because they both have MDC water and they have private water. In South Windsor, a representative would say, "We should be regulated." But MDC's cost for fire protection in that town is less than $6,000. Our water rate is half what Connecticut Water's rate is in that town, and yet the state rep is saying, "MDC should be regulated." I don't understand it, but those are the facts. This is just a chart that shows where the MDC is in relation to the, in relation to the country. And this, in our rate here, which is below the average, which is about $1,200 a year, that not only includes how much we charge for water and how much we charge for Avalorm, but it also includes that $410 that we're charging for the clean water surcharge. So we're below the average across the country. If you look at, excuse me, our closest city, which is Boston, and Boston is the third column from the left, they're above the average, they're a little bit more expensive than us. But again, for this chart, this chart is the 4.3%. So this is everything, all the services that we provide to our towns and to our water customers, and yet our rate increase for this year from last year is 4.3%. This is just a breakdown, and this is an Avalorm calculation, so every, it's based on your tax base, your town, your three-year rolling average, so that's why every town is different. The argument would be, get rid of Avalorm and go to a sewer user charge, it's more a fair way of charging. What we've realized and we've proved to the towns is, if you do a sewer user charge, you compare towns to town by the median household income. So I'm going to use an example. Hartford median household income is anywhere from $28,000 to $33,000 a year. West Hartford is $109,000. So the disparity is large, you know, we have this disparity amongst our eight towns, significant disparity. But what the towns need to understand is, every town has a little Hartford in it. So the median household income in Bloomfield is, I'm guessing, in the $70,000 range, okay? But you have probably 30% to 40% of your 10% to 25% tile of the median, like Hartford. So you can say, "Let's get rid of Avalorm, because we, at the median household income in each town, either benefit or don't benefit." Hartford, the residents in West Hartford will definitely get a break, because they're paying more, and you can see in this chart, they're paying more because of their tax base. So they get a break. Hartford, their $88 is going to triple. And the difference is, the 10% to 25% tile in East Hartford, in Bloomfield, in Rocky Hill, those people are going to be affected the same way Hartford is. So you can see, going from an Avalorm program to a sewer user program, that the poorest taxpayers in your community will pay like Hartford. Again, this is just a breakdown of really trying to explain our increases, our budget. And here's the most important thing. If you look at 2007, you'll see regular pay is 30%, 31%. So our regular pay, our employees are costing us 30% of our budget. And debt service is 16%. When I first started working here in 2006, we were spending about $6 million a year in improvements. We're now spending $200 million. Our debt service now is 33%, 34%. So our mortgage payment on our newer infrastructure is a huge portion of our budget. But look at regular pay, it's down to 22%. That didn't happen by accident. We realized that we were going to have to squeeze the belt and address our expenses and our costs for our employees. And this is a headcount. And I would ask anyone and argue with anyone regarding what the MDC has done for our towns. 2008 to 2019, we have reduced almost 200 employees, 200. And we didn't do that by just simply laying people off. Yes, 45 of those positions were associated with the CRA, losing that contract, but 150 positions, we did it through negotiation with the unions. We now have a high deductible plan, like most of our towns. We used East Hartford as our example. We have negotiated union contracts. We have taken over 100 positions and turned them into 12. We have, we talked about OPEB. Our new employees, when they retire, their spouses, dependents, no longer will receive OPEB benefits. That saved us 40, that saved the towns $40 million in liability of OPEB expenses. I just went through this, and we can talk about it in more detail. Another initiative that we did, we were utilizing our own staff to deal with worker compensation. And as you most well know, that it's a very difficult program to deal with, and trying to get the work done and deal with worker comp is very, very difficult. We brought in a worker comp trust as an administrator in 2017, or 16, sorry. And you can see there that we were in the $900,000 range, and we have cut our costs to $300,000 in the last couple of years. So we're doing everything we can to mitigate the impacts to our towns, but losing revenue at the level that we're losing it with water sales, and then the water sales impacting Avalorm, and the Avalorm impacting the clean water project, it's impossible to overcome. And I've got a bunch of other slides here talking about projects in Bloomfield, and I'm going to skip over those in the integrated plan. This is something I really want to focus on, the integrated plan, and then I'll shut up and let my Chairman speak. The town of Bloomfield was very supportive of the integrated plan, and that's great. And the integrated plan is really simple. It's all about what you're spending your money on. Do you spend your money on fixing old pipes to solve the same regulatory mandate? Or do you build large tunnels to pick up these SSOs and the CSOs? And it's all about what you're spending the money on. And my analogy is, if you have a problem getting to Hartford, and the DOT says to the town of Bloomfield, "We want you to build a highway to Hartford so we can get to Hartford quicker," and you say to the state, "But I have all my town roads I got to fix too. Why don't you let me fix my town roads, use my money to fix my town roads, and we'll make it, we'll be able to get to Hartford quicker through our existing town roads?" But the problem, Mr. DOT, is it's going to take us longer. And DOT says, "Nope, I want a highway and I want it quick." And that's exactly the same analogy we have with deep and the tunnels to the north branch of the Park River. We're saying, "Use integrated plans, stretch it out over 40 years, let us use the money that we have, the valuable resource that we have, to spend money and fix the existing pipes." Because if we have to build the tunnels, you still have to fix the pipes. You don't get out of fixing the pipes, because when the pipes break, you have to fix them under emergency. So there's no choice. In our budget, the emergency repairs are becoming more than a third, one-third of our capital investment. So if we're budgeting $100 million a year and improving our pipes in the streets, a third of that is emergency repair. So Homestead Avenue, I gave an example, Homestead Avenue, you can get to Bloomfield from Homestead Avenue. We fixed 26 feet of pipe in Homestead Avenue two years ago. We had to shut the road down, it was shut down for a week. There was a 30-foot hole, it cost us $1 million to fix 26 feet. And all we're suggesting is, let's fix Homestead Avenue, let's replace the pipe, make it a little bigger, use that pipe to help pick up two of the CSOs at the north branch of the Park River. It's going to take a little longer, but we're going to achieve the goal. We're not saying we're not going to achieve the goal, we just need a little relief so that our communities can help pay for it. And this is just a scenario of the fact that the integrated plan is cheaper. If our goal, if we're worried about 14% increase in water, why aren't we worried about the cost of the clean water project? Why aren't we concerned that, on the second page, scenario two, that Bloomfield is almost, it's $200, 200 and change, cheaper over 40 years per year? Why aren't we interested in that, and yet we're concerned about 14% increase in the water rate? And I, Mr. Chairman, would you like to say a few things? Or would you like to just ask questions?
Questions? Questions? Concerns?
Scott, if we go into the Avalorm question, like about 10 months ago, we were all discussing whether or not we should go user charges, and I thought that was what was going to happen, even though it didn't make sense, because the administrative cost would have been so much greater. Where is that now?
Yeah, so we had a number of meetings with our towns to talk about, you know, the study. We spent $150,000. The MDC told our towns at the time, we did a study in the '90s, the same result was going to occur, that, you know, Hartford was going to pay more, West Hartford was going to pay less. The difference was, as we started to explain to the towns, that most of the towns get a break. Hartford, East Hartford pays more, a lot more. But what the towns didn't realize until about four months ago, is that, as we talked about, the 10% to 25% tile within each town actually pays what Hartford pays. So the brakes kind of got put on hold here, and we're trying, we're trying to answer some questions for the towns. We're back to the drawing board, looking at answering some technical and financial questions, and we're hoping to have a final report in January.
So it's still on the table?
Still on the table, yes.
Counselor, go.
Yeah, I'll just ask a follow-up to that, and I apologize, because I've not read the report, I sort of knew the stuff you were alluding to, but one of the things, I remember when that first was talked about and started, I think like four years ago perhaps, I guess I did not realize that at the time they were going to do this study, all they were ultimately going to look at was the Avalorm as it stands now, where the distribution of the sewer cross across the eight MDC downs is based on the grand list, or the revenue from the grand list, whatever. And simply going to a fee per user. I guess my question to you at this point, with where that is, can it also, can something be looked at so that the charge is left to be a town-wide charge that is paid through the town's taxes, but that the metric to distribute the charge is not the grand list? Because I think one of West Hartford's complaints, and I think it's a valid complaint, is that there's a very tenuous correlation and association between sewer use and the value of your property, so many other things enter into value of the property. I mean, granted, size, you know, size of the houses would be in, and that would be a correlation. But, you know, it seems like there could be some other metrics, and granted, there would be winners and losers, you know? But it would appear that that would solve the main issue of, you know, West Hartford's complaints, and at the same time, you know, probably still come up with the same answer relative to that lower median, you know, the lower household income. So is there any plan to do that?
Sure. So to answer your question, we actually looked at eight scenarios in this study, with all different variations. I'm glad you brought up West Hartford, because it's my favorite subject. West Hartford has yet to support-
Bloomfield's your favorite subject, I think.
And I would be concerned about Bloomfield, not West Hartford, but I would just say this, is that West Hartford has yet to support the integrated plan. And here's why this is important, okay? This is important for the eight, or the other seven towns. West Hartford would say, "We're subsidizing the rest of their towns, because we're paying a higher tax," right? Through Avalorm. Think about this, the number-one cause of us spending $700 million at the Hartford Treatment Plan, and the number-one cause of spending $2.5 billion on the clean water project is really West Hartford and Hartford. And Hartford is being driven by, it's not their fault, everybody else is contributing to the problem, they have their own problems. But if you, we talk about wet weather flow in West Hartford, on a dry day, they're sending us 8 million gallons of sewer, on a wet day, they're sending us 80 million. And they're sending us 80 million because they don't have storm systems for the residents to dump their stormwater into. So guess what's happening? West Hartford would argue that we're subsidizing everyone on Avalorm. Well, honestly, you're subsidizing West Hartford on the clean water project. You're subsidizing West Hartford on the cost of them not putting in storm systems, so their stormwater's coming to Hartford- So, their stormwater's coming to Hartford and everybody else is paying for it. So, I would ask Hartford, "West Hartford, you're worried about you subsidizing us, we're subsidizing you. Everybody in Hartford, everybody in Bloomfield is paying the same cost for the Clean Water Surcharge on their bill, $4.10 per CCF. But yet, the majority of the stormwater, the closest other problem that we have is Weathersfield. Weathersfield in maybe Newington, but we're talking about 3 million to 5 million gallons of dry weather flow and 30 million wet weather. And so, if you look at what happened last year on Lynbrook Street in West Hartford, that's because everyone is pumping their groundwater from their basement, because they have no stormwater to connect to, into the sewer system. And the sewer system is overwhelmed and all of that water goes to the plant. That's why we have to build tunnels. We have to build tunnels because the regulators say, "You must collect it and collect it quick. We're not going to let you separate." But we can't solve West Hartford's problem and therefore we can't solve your problem unless West Hartford is willing to spend $100 to $200 million on storm infrastructure. So, they need to do that. They need to do that for you. Because you're subsidizing their problem in their town and everybody else is too. And yet, West Hartford is the one saying, "We're not being treated fairly." And yet, West Hartford is the one who has not yet invited us so we can give these facts to their town. So, I would ask you, councilman, to say to West Hartford, "If you're subsidizing us on the Avalon, why don't we create a fairness on the Clean Water Surcharge and just charge the towns that are creating the problem?" Right?
Yes.
I follow up on that. We're going through a lot. In fact, we've hired a person to take care of it, to take care of overflow and, of course, blessed with less and previous service than towns like West Hartford where they don't take care of it, aren't able to, because they've got too many roads and roofs and things like that. And so, this is really becoming hard solution, I think, to your problem. If we can not send you overflow water and have it properly handled and drained and put into the use where it belongs. And that would be the only way to solve the problem. So, I agree with you. I think West Hartford has much more of a problem than we do doing that.
Right. And just remember this, is that if we didn't have, stormwater's the problem. So, in the 70s, when they created the Clean Water Act, EPA, the problem was stormwater all along, right? But we went through almost 40 years and we're now at the end of building out $3 billion worth of improvements by building tunnels to collect stormwater rather than get the stormwater out, right? And it's our towns' responsibility, each and every one of the eight towns, except Hartford, because Hartford is a combined system, that they should be doing their part to get the stormwater out of the system, right? And I don't, I'm not throwing West Hartford under the bus, but to the councilman's point, we hear it all the time, West Hartford is upset that they feel like they're subsidizing everybody else on Avalon. And yet, it's the complete opposite on the Clean Water Program in reality.
Councilor Kelly.
Madam Mayor, thank you. When there is a failure within the old tunnels or storm drains, are you then adding on within the new system when you're fixing and replacing the new, within West Hartford or any township that may not be?
Yes. So, an important part, we didn't get to it, but the important part of the integrated plan is, one option, build tunnels, do it quickly, collect the overflow, right? Forget about meaning deep concerns. We don't really care about the existing pipes that have fallen apart, right? In the integrated plan, we have shown through our due diligence, we have found $450 million worth of improvements that need to happen, one way or another, emergencies. We've got to fix this pipe. So, we either build the tunnels and the towns pay the $450 million over time, or we integrate it into the Clean Water Program and use the $450 to solve the regulatory mandate. But that's why the towns should care, because we're going to spend all this money on tunnels and then there's still this $450 million plus that's got to get spent. And the only viable solution is the towns throughout Avalon.
Just let me add on to that issue because it's the question of Hartford. How do you do this? Can you do it within the period of time? Can you do it, there we go, can you do it in the period of time that DEEP has provided? Absolutely cannot do it. It's a problem in Hartford for two reasons, I can tell you. One is that Hartford isn't structured like any other suburban town. Almost 70% of the residents in Hartford live, park on the streets, not in their garages or in their backyards or things of that nature. As a result, when we started this program, the separation in Hartford and then went to the tunnels, we had Franklin Avenue, where we opened all Franklin Avenue up, and it wasn't in a tunnel, it was opened up in a trench. We did the same thing in Albany Avenue. We had total chaos with the business people trying to be able to determine how you would get into their business, their effective, that's when we went to the tunnels. However, there's a significant amount of separation that still has to be done, as Scott said, with the tunnels. And with people parking on the street, almost 70% of the people parking on the street, opening those streets creates total chaos. And what we've got to do is do smaller sections to finish this project, which adds time onto the process, as well as stretching the thing out to be able to do both the tunnels and the separation in Hartford for the same basic cost, rather than trying to do it now or it goes up. The other issue is, the question of subsidy is, we are subsidizing the state of Connecticut in the process of what we're doing. And I say that in this sense. The Hartford landfill is owned by the state of Connecticut. They took over this issue from CRA. Right now, they're discharging 90,000 gallons of hazardous waste into that sewer system. They've been telling us that it's groundwater. It is not groundwater. It exceeds the ammonia composition of what's in that landfill and is escaping out. They're supposed to pay, they're paying, they want to pay, what's it, three cents?
They want to pay about $150,000.
$150,000 a year. The actual cost that everybody else pays, everybody else pays 13 cents. We brought the attention when we realized, in viewing the sewer that they're using, that it had been totally corroded and started to determine what was going into that sewer that would corrode it and cost a $300,000 capital cost to us to repair it. It was the amount of ammonia that was being discharged exceeded the federal and state requirement on it. And we tested it. So, we went to them and said, "I'm sorry, but you're not telling us the truth about what you're putting in there." And the responsibility is it's 13 cents a gallon. So, that went from, what, $200,000 to about?
$4 million.
$4 million a year. And their response was, "We can't afford to pay you. It's not a defense. They have an obligation to pay that." As a result, we went to sue them and the Claims Commissioner for two years has put it on the side and hasn't dealt with the issue. Statutory language says after two years, it goes to the General Assembly. And the General Assembly, right now, it's $11 million that they owe us. If that money had been paid to us, you would have had reductions in your rates, not additions to, add-ons to the rate. So, that we're in a situation that we're going to go to the legislature this year and ask the legislature that we have the right to sue the state of Connecticut and let a judge make that determination, not the Claims Commissioner. So, those are some of the things that aren't articulated outwardly in this issue. We've been to the state, so we have the regulator and the violator being the same person. That's DEEP. Now, you know, we've been through negotiations with them and there's no negotiation as far as they're concerned. So, these are things that affect you because you're subsidizing the state of Connecticut by virtue of them not paying that revenue to us. And what we've told them is, in injunctive action, we didn't want them in our sewer because that leaks into the river, we're going to have EPA down our throats saying that we're causing the problem. The other part of it is that PFAS now, which is a big issue, PFAS is a runoff that's also running off of that and is in that 90,000 gallons a day that is running off that into our sewer system. So, we've got a major problem that it has to get resolved and hopefully, in the legislator, those legislators that are so concerned about what the charges are, will step up and support us being able to go into a courtroom and get some kind of equity relative to what's happening in that situation.
Any other questions?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, if the, let me see if I get this straight. If the legislature doesn't come through, will this $4 and whatever the first number was you were talking about, will that cover all the costs you just talked about in cleaning up the system or is there still additional charges, additional money required?
Well, it's two issues that the chairman's talking about. The money that the state owes us, which is landfill, is, they owe us $11 million, they owe us $2 million a year moving forward every year. Pratt &amp; Whitney, same exact discharge is giving us $3.6 million.
But those numbers are still in this calculation, isn't it?
Well, no, they're not in the calculation because we're not receiving the money. So, as the chairman mentioned, if we were to be paid $2 million a year every year plus they owe us $11, you wouldn't have a 6.9% increase in Avalon. You'd have a negative increase. You'd have a 20% negative increase in Avalon. But as the chairman said, the state's position is, we can't afford it. We don't think it's fair. But it's a rate that was created in 2007 after we, our eight towns, paid $800,000 in fines for the Clean Water Project. So, we said, "Okay, we're going to be charged $800,000 for fines. We want to get all the nasty stuff out of our system. We don't want groundwater in our system. We don't want contaminated groundwater in our system. So, we're going to put a fee on it, 13 cents a gallon, that forces people to get their water out of our system. Pratt &amp; Whitney's paying the charge, others are paying the charge, the state has chosen, we don't want to pay because we're the state."
Councilor De La Riza.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just two quick things. So, with regard to Hartford, you know, we did struggle with the possibility that they would not make their Avalon payments. Do you anticipate that situation?
I think it's definitely behind us. The city of Hartford actually has no debt now. The state of Connecticut is suing $580 million in debt in that cleanout. I think the city, I mean, I'm not saying they're not struggling with certain situations, but I don't see this as a problem with them being able to meet those obligations.
Okay, that's good. My second question is, what are you going to do to sell more water? How can you generate more revenue? That seems to be a common theme in here. Like, a lot of your other major expenses, which we had commented on the last time you were here, including the high deductible insurance, including the employees, the benefits for the workers' comp, a lot of these have decreased dramatically. So, the common theme I'm hearing though is what's driving a lot of the uptick is the fact that you're not generating revenue. So, what's the plan to sell?
Well, we formed a committee about three months ago talking about options to raise revenue relative to the water system. And the rate, what we do have is an industrial rate that we imposed and then?
2016.
2016, 2017. And then the following year, we suspended because every year, we adopt a rate, which means that when Niagara came to town, the bottom line issue was, we entered into a rate agreement with them. They weren't discharging 100% of their sewer, into the sewer, they were doing about 30%. Wasn't it Scott? 30% was the amount that we did. And as a result, we have now, through Metro Hartford Alliance, we're dealing with them because Metro Hartford Alliance has changed in the last four years. They're basically now running the Chamber of Commerce type of company, going strictly to economic development. And economic development is what they do, is go across the country, insurance industry, aircraft industry, and they're out soliciting people and bringing people in. One of our problems is, we cannot, we have two significant issues regardless of what some people felt, is that we've got probably the finest quality and quantity of water in the country. When you look across the country, we have a great, not only a resource, but we have abundant resource relative to what we have. We went through the last drought, 16, 17, was it 15? 15, 16. We had Fairfield County, we were providing 10 million gallons a day to New Britain. We were providing, we had a contract with them. Across the state, if you went into Fairfield County, they're down around 15% capacity. Parts of Manchester in the region were 15%. We never went below 75% in terms of our capacity. We've got a phenomenal system. It's a very expensive system to maintain, the watershed, we have 30 billion gallons of water under reservoir. And what we are looking at is going to the legislature and asking, because you get into an economic development issue, you can't say to someone, "You're going to come here and we're going to give you a water rate consistent with whatever other things are offered by the state, but we're going to turn around in a year or two years and we're going to eliminate that rate." And what we believe we need is the right to enter in on a contractual basis with certain rate structures. And that's the only way we're going to attract people. And Metro Hartford Alliance said, "You've got a black eye in terms of the issue of what you did. You entice someone to use the water and then you change the rate the next year." It's not something from an economic development standpoint gives great confidence to the people you're dealing with. So, we're trying to be realistic with that issue. And we've got to sell more water. If we don't sell more water, you're going to continue to have the problem with rate increase. So, it's not rocket science. It's a function of what you do. So, if discounts bring you larger water users, you're going to sell more water. That benefits everybody in the system. You don't, everybody in the system's going to pay more as you grow up because it's a revenue stream that comes in. We've got our operating expenses down dramatically, as Scott just pointed out to you. The number of people, we're down, we're doing, we have 488 people, we're doing $300 million worth of construction work a year. And if you look at our operation, we streamlined it with the unions over the last seven years. It's been significant. So, those are the things, the realities that we deal with.
But just to reiterate, and I've already mentioned this, with all of that, we're still a dollar cheaper than the regional water authority in New Haven, which is identical to the MDC. They're created by the state and we're more than half of what the private water utilities that are regulated by the MDC. We're half. And yet, the MDC should be regulated. It doesn't make any sense.
And we're not, we are not a quasi-public agency. We are a municipal government chartered by the state of Connecticut and the people in this district own it. The representation, the governor appoints eight people, 16 people by the towns and four people by the legislature. And the issue of whether we're being transparent, we've had 60 meetings since September with different towns, people, workshops, and everything's on our website and people make representations that we're not transparent. It's difficult to deal with, but we deal with everything. That's politics here. And the asset is owned by eight member towns, basically.
Just a quick question. What other towns besides West Hartford have stormwater issues?
So, we have, so Hartford has its own stormwater issues because it's a combined sewer system. So, both stormwater and sewer is intended to go into the sewer pipe. And that's what was built and there's no way to change it, right? Then you have, every town has stormwater, sorry, every town has stormwater issues. Then you have, every town has stormwater, sorry, every town has stormwater issues, some are different than others. Newington and Weathersfield have similar issues with groundwater. All of our towns have high groundwater table. It's just the nature of the beast being within the region of the Connecticut River. And the way that the homes were built back in the 20s and 30s, that the foundation drains are under the concrete slabs, it collects the water, and then the water should be going to the backyard or going to a storm system. But, unfortunately, they were connected to the sewer system. In West Hartford, the MDC didn't take over the sewer system until 1982. So, the system was built that way. They connected the storm pipes to the sewer pipe, but they owned the storm system. Then when the MDC comes in and takes over the sewer system, we're left with a problem. So, the majority of the stormwater problem, as it relates to the MDC, is West Hartford. We're talking about, again, 8 million gallons of sewer on a dry day. They use about 8 million gallons of water, so that makes sense. But on a wet day, they're sending us 80 million gallons. And then, Weathersfield and Newington are close second, but they're in the 3 to 30 million gallons. So, they're three times, West Hartford is three times the problem as the other two. And yet, as I mentioned, everyone else is paid an equal and fair share for the Clean Water Project, which is...
And if you take East Hartford, they're in the best shape of everybody because their system had accommodated Pratt &amp; Whitney prior to that, and then Pratt &amp; Whitney decided they were gonna do it, what, 15, 12, 10 years ago? They were gonna do it themselves, they built a treatment facility, and all of a sudden realized that it wasn't a great thing to be in the wastewater treatment business. And, this past year, we entered into an agreement with Pratt &amp; Whitney, and it was a 75, $7.5 million a year contract. And what we did is, we made a deal with them to keep this, based on what it costs us to operate. And also, we offered the state of Connecticut the same rate. We basically reduced it by 48% to get everybody on board. Pratt &amp; Whitney was fine, they came into the system. So, that's a revenue stream that we have. If the state paid their part of it, it would be a significant benefit to everybody in the district.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanna go back to one of my colleagues had mentioned about, what are you gonna do to generate more revenue, right? And to get more users? With existing Niagara, for example, do you guys have plans to approach them to say, hey, what can we do?
Well, Niagara, if we had kept the existing rate, would have been to four lines right now and we'd be getting 1.8 million gallons of water a day in sales. Obviously, we would, we would talk to them. They're in our district, but I'm talking about people outside of the district are really where we're targeting at this point.
Well, I just wanted to know, to be clear, are you also targeting Niagara to say, hey?
Of course we are.
Okay, so that's what...
No, it's a third one, right? So, whatever the rate is, whatever it's, it's a uniform rate, so it's, we have to provide it, anybody who wants, meets the criteria for the industrial rate would be eligible for that rate. But, to the chairman's point, is what happened with Niagara, which is a black eye within the industry, within, you know, companies coming in, the number I wanna say was $80 million that they spent on their plant, somewhere in that range. Who's gonna come in and spend $80 million when, you know, there's this potential for this rate structure, and then, but there's also the potential of any given year, the rate structure being removed. So, we have, the state of Connecticut has its own challenges in terms of bringing companies in. We lost 29,000 residents last year. We lost 17,000 the year before, 15,000 the year before that. We gotta stop people from leaving before we can recruit people to come here. And that's the state of Connecticut's problem. And then, you know, Niagara issue is just another example. Believe me, that spread across the country when that happened.
So, here's a follow-up question, have you identified other companies that you're looking at?
We have not, because we're gonna have to go to the legislature to get this approval.
So, you haven't done any homework?
Well, we've done homework because we deal with Metro Hartford Alliance. And of course, they're out there, and water is a critical issue to whoever, let's start economic development, it starts with water.
So, do we have any interest in it?
So, the challenge that we have is Connecticut, we have one challenge.
No, but the question, that's not the...
But the question, but the point is, is that what we have talked to people in the industry, economic development, and the answer is, Connecticut has a black eye. So, Connecticut itself has a problem.
Well, it's not, I don't think that's gonna stop it.
That's not the issue. But, the issue is, we're not gonna go out and start soliciting people. Metro Hartford does, in the course of trying to bring companies in here, one of the first things they ask is about water. That's one of the basic questions. And they came to us and said, you know, so you gotta do something about this issue, because we could bring companies in that have an interest, not water bottling companies, but there's several other industries that require water. Massive data centers, data centers are gonna come eight to 10 times the size of what you see today. And they have a big demand for water because of the air conditioning, the cooling issues we have. That's one industry that they're looking at and talking to now. And you can't take it out of aquifers. Basically, there's a problem taking that kind of water out of an aquifer. So, it's those issues, but we haven't solicited anybody because we can't go to someone to make a representation that we can provide a fair and reasonable contract with someone that's coming in. So, that's what we have to do first.
Help me out, I'm trying to figure out, this is a simple calculation, I must be missing something. Your rate charge comparison, sheet 13, you're showing Windsor $182 and Bloomfield $231.
Page, I'm sorry, page 13.
You're 13. And, I mean, they have maybe 9,000 more people than we are, it's not on a per-person basis, so...
Well, that's the avalon slide, sorry, this one?
The rate charge comparison.
Yeah, so that's sewer. That's sewer.
So, with more people in Windsor, more houses, assuming that, wouldn't the rate be higher? It's not on a per-person basis?
Well, so remember, avalon, the way it's calculated is, you're basically taking your three-year running average of your taxes collected. Right, so it's all about taxes, not about avalon, not about the number of people in town.
It's based on tax receipts.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I don't...
Thank you.
I don't think so, I think it was part information.
Yeah, I think it was most important.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thanks Scott.
Oh, excuse me. So, she just asked if they had questions from the audience?
Yeah, actually, my cousin's running out of...
It's good.
I don't think so.
This presentation, we have another question?
Where is that?
You do have citizens standing.
So, we'd be happy to answer questions if you...
Okay, so, we can take a couple of questions from the audience, and remember, you have a three-minute timeframe.
Yeah, I just didn't understand what some of this, I wanted to ask a question about a couple of slides. Is that okay?
Sure.
So, on the slide...
So, can you do me a favor, please? Can you do me a favor? Can you get up to the mic and ask a question just for the benefit of those that might be watching? So, just do it like how we do the regular citizen petition, your name, your address, and then your question.
Can I still make a comment about a question?
I think so. I'm sorry, you said?
Name, address.
Valors, 88 Camor Road, Bloomfield. My question was about, is this 23, is that how you have it numbered, Scott?
Yeah, that's the average. So, this is the average chart, and then we have one just for Bloomfield, which is the next one.
Right, so I just wanna get it clear in my mind, because when you're comparing the two scenarios, over the car, up until the year 260, what is the total expense comparison between scenario one and scenario two? For example, you know, if we don't ever finish cleaning up the sewage outflows into the Connecticut River for another 41 years, that's part of the delay, that's part of the implication of the delay. But, how much, because these look fairly equal over the years, so can you have the total?
Yes, stay right here, I'm gonna answer your question. So, we had another chart, we got a lot of charts. But, basically, the first bar in both of the graphs, the first bar is your building and tunnel. So, the green is avalon and the blue is the clean water surcharge. So, just think of it as, the green is fixing pipes at roughly a $40 million a year improvement and the towns are paying for it, and then the blue is the $2.5 billion program. So, we're gonna spend $2.5 billion on the Clean Water Program, and we're gonna spend about $2 billion on the existing system within the MDC. So, roughly $4 billion, give or take a couple billion. So, if you look at the first bar, the first year is, there's just one bar. Going to an integrated plan, you can see that the green and the blue, you know, on the second bar in each year, the blue gets bigger. And what that means is, we're shifting, we're still spending $4 billion, but it's what you spend the money on. So, when you see more blue, that means we're fixing old pipes and we're building less tunnels. And...
To Val's, if I can call you Val, because you're my friend.
Sure. So, so the answer is, what we said to DEEP is, yes, we could build a tunnel, and we could get to the North Branch of the Parker River by 2029, we could do that. But, our solution, there's four overflows to the North Branch of the Parker River, and we're gonna eliminate three of them by 2029 with our plan, integrated plan. So, yes, there will be one overflow that will take more time because we have to spend that $450 million to separate pipes and fix pipes. But, think about it this way, if we build a tunnel, right, and we have all this existing infrastructure that needs improvement, how does the overflow get to the tunnel from the existing pipes? So, if, I'll use Lindbergh, does everybody remember what happened to Lindbergh in Bloom, in West Hartford last year? All right? So, we're building a tunnel to West Hartford, and it's gonna pick up these overflows, and that's exactly what DEEP wanted, get the tunnel in, pick up the overflow, and it's doing that. But, the tunnel does zero for Lindbergh, because West Hartford has a major problem with inflow from stormwater. So, the tunnel is only, it's after waterfall, it's picking up the overflow, and the regulators are happy, but it doesn't do anything to solve Lindbergh. So, we still have to solve Lindbergh, how do we do it? So, we gotta spend more money. So, what we're trying to do, is lessons learned, is not make that mistake. We want to use the money that we have to replace old pipes, solve the same problem, take a little longer, but we also have to worry about, you know, who is paying for this? Our residences are paying for this. We have to provide some relief, and it's really not that much relief, right? It's just that we're spending $4 billion on existing infrastructure rather than spending $2 billion on a tunnel, and $2 billion on existing infrastructure, and the tunnel's gonna be built. And if we do our job right, if in 40 years, West Hartford does what they need to do, Weathersfield does what they need to do, Newington does what they need to do, and we get what we need to have done in Hartford, think about it, the stormwater's gonna be out, but we're gonna have this big tunnel, and that tunnel's gonna be dry. So, we spend all this money on a big tunnel to collect overflows because we want it done now, but that money will be wasted, and I'm not saying it'll be dry, but the point is, theoretically, if we do our job right, it should be dry, right? We should get all the stormwater out, and then we won't need a tunnel. So, we invested $2.5 billion in something that 40 years from now, we won't need. So, that's the difference. Sorry.
So, these totals?
So, the totals are basically, the overall cost for everything that's shown there is about $4 billion. $2.5 billion for the Clean Water Project, and roughly $2 billion for the existing infrastructure. And what we're proposing on the second bar, is that we're proposing is, let's not spend $2 billion on a tunnel, let's take that money and build a half of a tunnel, a smaller tunnel. We have to build a tunnel in downtown Hartford because there's no way we're gonna separate downtown Hartford. So, we're gonna build a tunnel in Hartford downtown. And what we've said, which is a fair thing, is I'm not gonna put an addition on my house until I pay off my house, right? We're saying the same thing. We're not gonna build a second tunnel in downtown Hartford until the tunnel we're building right now is paid off in 2038. What's wrong with that? Pay one thing first, then move on to the next thing. We're still replacing pipes, we're still lining pipes, we're still improving the system, we're getting stormwater out, we're solving SSOs and CSOs. But, our goal is to spend roughly the same, but on old pipes, not new tunnels.
Okay, and could I just add, can I thank you for the answer?
You got it.
Because a lot of people are concerned, and we've read in the paper, that all MDC water does not have PFAS contamination in it, but is there an actual level that's been tested?
I'm glad you asked that, can I answer that? So, MDC has no PFAS in its drinking water.
Zero.
Zero, right? What the chairman had alluded to is, we've been fighting about groundwater at the landfill. Now, as you know, there's been PFAS discharges at the airport, and that PFAS foam got into our sewer system, which should never have happened, and it went to the treatment plant. And we had to deal with the press, we had to deal with everything, right? So, we told the state of Connecticut, and we told the airport, it's your responsibility, every air hangar needs a spill prevention plan, and that's the state's responsibility to regulate that. The state has said to the airport, we are gonna fine you $25,000 for every incident that occurs at the airport moving forward. And yet, this is the avalon part, and yet, the state of Connecticut, in writing, in the Hartford Current, has said, quote, "The number one source of PFAS is landfills." So, immediately, when they said that, we said, wait a minute, we were worried about contaminating groundwater, now we understand it's PFAS? And now we realize, they actually tested for PFAS in October of 2018. And they then knew, we didn't know until the incident at the airport, but they gave us the results after we asked. You just said that landfills are the number one source of PFAS? Is there any PFAS in our landfill? So, every day, as the chairman mentioned, 90,000 gallons of water a day go to the treatment plant. Every day, they're sending PFAS to the MDC. 80 towns use that landfill. And yet, our eight towns are gonna wind up through regulation, have to remove PFAS from their 90,000 gallons a day, and they don't feel like they have to pay anything. But, they can fine the airport $25,000 for an incident that occurs once every 20 years. But yet, they're discharging PFAS to the MDC, and there's no way to treat it. The only good thing that we do is we incinerate our waste, but we don't know how much is getting into the river. But, every day that happens, and yet, no one's concerned about it. Everybody's focused on the airport, everybody's focused on pizza boxes, but no one worries about what the state of Connecticut's discharging to the Connecticut River.
Could I just add on to that, because this is a really interesting issue. We don't know a lot about PFAS, at least the articulation from DEEP. State of Connecticut has 322,000 wells, 322,000 wells. How much PFAS is in that? When you think about what PFAS does, it releases in water streams and things of that nature, not so much streams, but the discharge, it's a whole bunch of compounds that are put on for, what is it, for, when they use the PFAS, come from, when you take waterproofing, waterproofing, pizza boxes, things like that nature. That percolates into the ground and goes down into aquifers, and that's generally purified. You can't break that down by that process. That means you're gonna end up in wells. The question becomes Glastonbury. Glastonbury's got uranium, pesticides, and everything else in their well systems over there. We're gonna need public water.
for, what is it, for, when they use the PFAS, come from, when you take waterproofing, waterproofing, pizza boxes, things like that nature. That percolates into the ground, and goes down into aquifers, and that's generally purified. You can't break that down by that process. That means you're going to end up in wells. The question becomes Glastonbury. Glastonbury's got uranium, pesticides, and everything else in their well systems over there. We're going to need public water source. It doesn't come out of an aquifer. So this thing is just the beginning of where we're going. And one of the things is, we have an aquifer, not an aquifer, we have a, we catch our water and it runs into a reservoir, we know what's in the reservoir, we know what the composition of it is. Take it out of the ground, you don't know where it came from or what it is. So, this is an issue that's just beginning to unravel, as we deal with the whole issue, and how we're going to break it down. I guess the only way it is to burn it. And that's what we do with our sludge, we give water through heat and burn those things. It's a lot coming at us.
Thank you. Okay, you may go now. This gentleman is looking at me like, can we go? Is it possible to go? You can go. Thank you very much. Thank you. At this time, we do have a few announcements. There is some employment opportunities at the library, a librarian on full-time and part-time position is open. There are police cadets, they have a position open. Summer camp and pool positions will be posted in January, I know that our students are very interested in that, and sometimes by the time they get the information, the positions are already filled. On Saturday, November 30th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., the McMahon-Lintonberry Library at the children's room will have a holiday coloring day. On Monday, December 2nd, at 6:30, the Proster Library will be having line dancing. On Tuesday, the 3rd, at 5:00 p.m., the Proster Library will be having a gift-making event. Congratulations to our police department, who on November 21st was approved and awarded the status of advanced accreditation by the Commission on Accreditation of Law Enforcement Agencies. Public works would like to make a friendly reminder with the winter coming up, that cleaning your sidewalks, maintaining your sidewalks, shoveling your sidewalks is your responsibility. So please do not think that the public work is going to come out and clean your sidewalks, it's not going to happen. Please make sure that your trash and your recyclable cans are in the driveway and not in the road, as it will interfere with the plow trucks. Ensure that your mailboxes are secure and protected from the weight of the plowed snow. If for some reason your mailbox gets damaged, it is your responsibility. So I know that winter is coming, and I know that the bad weather is coming, so let's keep some of these things in mind. The last day of leaf collection is December 6th, the leaves must be in paper bags so that they can be collected. Our senior services was also notified that they have successfully completed their national accreditations as well, so congratulations to our social services. Please note that Medicare enrollment is open, it's from October 15th, I'm sorry, Medicare enrollment was from November 1st to December 15th. So if there's anyone that needs to Medicare, please call our social services. Access Health also has open enrollment, you can call our social services, or you can also call the health district. The CRT Energy Assistance Program helps with low and middle income eligible households pay their heating bills. Please call 860-560-5800 to schedule an appointment. On December 7th will be our holiday parade, and that will begin at 5:15. Entertainment will start at 5:15, the parade will start at 6:00 p.m., and our tree lighting ceremony will follow the parade. At this time, are there any citizen statements?
First person is Joan Gueter.
Please be reminded that you have three minutes, please state your name and address.
A letter.
Is this a Thanksgiving card?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Joan Gueter, I live at 14 Sheba Way. Dear councilors, on behalf of the board of the library, I'm writing to urge you to quickly put together a building committee for a new library. In order for a referendum on the funding for a library to be in time for the fall 2020 election, a date which would have a large turnout, we would need to have our referendum papers and a library plan completed by August 2020. Furthermore, to take advantage of the state's grant program for library construction, our intent forms must be filed by June 30th, and you see the calendar I have attached to that letter. Putting the committee together now will demonstrate the council's commitment to carrying out their campaign agenda, to make sure that at long last, Bloomfield has a 21st century library. The council has already allocated $50,000 for a reconstituted building committee. We believe the following people would be useful additions to such a committee, Mark Weisman, who was on the previous committee, Greg Davis, Ann Levitt, Dolores Howard. We would also like to see the library director, Elizabeth Lane, included as well. The new council's vision for Bloomfield has clearly won the town's endorsement. The town now owns the library property adjacent to the current library. By revising and updating Tai Su Kim's plan for a new library, this ambitious time scheme can indeed be realized, but we have no time to lose. Thank you for your consideration.
I've got a few comments on the MDC presentation. My first comment is, that's a lot to unpack. I guess my initial reaction was, I was a little surprised about the length of time that was spent talking about if we were regulated. If you haven't read the article in the current, and you wondered what was being referred to or alluded to, there's an article in the paper about the 14% water rate increase, and the suggestion by Senator Slapp, and I think some other senator or representative, that be considered, the charter be amended, and that regulation by PURA be considered. I just caution people to not assume as a given that if a utility is regulated by PURA, that means the rates are going to double, that doesn't necessarily mean that. So, as I said, there's a lot to unpack. The other thing I was a little bit surprised about, I guess, is the amount of time spent talking about the long-term control plan, the integrated plan, they came in a year ago, and I know there's been a lot of back and forth with DEEP. I, for one, would like to hear from DEEP, because we've been getting pretty much one side of the story, and I think there's a lot of back and forth going on. I was happy to hear Mr. Jealousen allude, or make the comment that every town has a little Hartford in it. One of the things I've always been concerned about in terms of the integrated plan was the shift from the ad valorem to the Clean Water Project charges, because the median income, I think, in Bloomfield isn't really, an average is an average, it doesn't really represent what the reality on the street is. And I think in terms of the aging infrastructure of the MDC, a lot of that is probably concentrated in those portions of Hartford that are lower income. A lot of folks on the west side have wells, and have septic systems, and so they aren't subject to this. If there's a shift from the ad valorem, they will benefit. So I think that needs to be taken into account. The real thing that I really, the real thing that I wanted to emphasize to the council though, if you're not aware of the fact that there's an independent consumer advocate, that was hired by the MDC two years ago, created through a legislative act by the General Assembly, the ICA, his name is David Silverstone, he just so happens to be, can I just finish this thought? He happens to be the former Scott Jealousen counterpart for Regional, for Regional. He was, I mean, he was a water guy. And he has very good statements on a webpage. I encourage you all to take a look and see what he has to say about the 2020 rates. He's very concerned about what's coming down the pike, the fact that rate increases aren't sustainable. So please take a look at that, and what he had to say about the economic development rates last year, because those are coming back. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for your...
What's his website? What's the website?
If you go...
If you go to the MDC's homepage, and you look at the tab along the top, where you see customer, and you hit that dropdown, you'll see independent consumer advocate, and just click on that. And he has quarterly reports, which are very valuable, and as I said, he is an expert. So he's another good, he has a good perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Val's Eddie88, can more? I had a few MDC comments. One is, I just wanted to make sure you and people at home know that it is not just the MDC rate payers that are financing the Clean Water Project, the cleanup of the Connecticut River and Long Island Sound. Probably, I believe it's close to half the cost of that project is funded through Clean Water Project bonding that all the residents of Connecticut pay. And I think this is, this is an environmental kind of justice issue, it's not just us doing this. So that's one factor I want to know. The original consent decree came out in 2006, it's 2019. There's been this progressive delay of dealing with filings and planning, and I do, you know, we're balancing a difficult problem, a lot of costs, but we're also talking about delaying yet another 40 years addressing this environmental issue. And I would also say, you know, with, as Paula noted, if the council or anybody makes a decision to shift the burden of taxes from ad valorem to the Clean Water Project charge, I believe a lot of people in Bloomfield who have sewers are on the east side of town, and it's going to be a radical shift of water bill payments that could represent an environmental justice issue. So I'd look at that carefully before doing anything. And I do want to comment about the Niagara issue, because the way that rate structure was built in as an economic development rate, it applied to one company only, and a massive water user. And the MDC went to the legislature, I'd love to know how much money of their budget they spent in three years with lobbyists and lawyers, because they refused to support any legislation that would say, well, if there's a drought, you have to cut back on shipping bottled water out of state, out of our aquifer. And that, that was just, there was a refusal to even, there was a refusal to oppose that, there was a refusal to oppose the information release of how their water supply was calculated, there was a refusal to recognize water as a public trust. So we need to cooperate with them, because we have water problems coming, partly because we haven't repaired the infrastructure for 100 years, and it's coming, it's coming too. So I would hope we could be more cooperative, because, you know, I care about the water too, and I care about the cost of water, especially people who can't afford it in town. If they want an economic development rate, then it should be something that allows businesses to start, but phases out over time, it should not just be based on one massive user, and it really, our town needs to consider the environmental impact of the kinds of companies we're bringing here, not one that produces 10 million plastic bottles every day. And using, final comment, using, you know, they keep saying, well, we sold more water to Niagara. They sell about 50 million gallons of water a day, so if Niagara increased its consumption by 900,000 gallons a day, how much is that really, is that going to fix the water budget for the MDC? I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Merely no, no MDC question. Thank goodness.
Larry Pleasant, 16 Old Village Road. Congratulations, new council session's here. Totally different. I'm more concerned about big picture. Who are we, where are we doing, where are we going? We're hearing, we've had this deep thing about the water bill, tiny part of what you have to deal with. People don't realize, it's a minor part of what's on your plate. So the question I'd like you folks to think about, and talk to us more about over the next couple of months is, bigger picture, what's on your plate, where are you going, where are you taking us? What's your vision for us? You have all these plans, we have five-year, 10-year, you have so much you have to do, and I'd like you to talk to us more about what you're going to be doing, where, when, why, and how. What's up? You know? And how are we going to pay all these bills? We have a lot going on. What's the plan? And let's have a conversation about that, and let's do it without pointing fingers. I experienced this thing that y'all went through last year with a lot of finger pointing. How about us being more positive this go around, and not point fingers, but be more constructive? Let's use the opportunity to, use our experience to help a relatively new council gain experience and new polling. Criticism's time to put in your back pocket, let's work as a team. And I didn't see a lot of that two years ago, I challenge everybody to do a better job this go around.
That's it? All right. Thank you all so very much. Council, Council of New Business, 1920, House 24, considering take action regarding appointment, I'm sorry, adoption of resolution, 2019 State Homeland Security Grant Program, is there a motion on the floor?
Madam Mayor, motion?
Yes, ma'am.
To adopt the resolution?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, resolution to, motion for the resolution to adopt?
Second.
Is there any discussions?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, this resolution is required from each municipality by the Department of Homeland Security in order to access regional homeland security grant funds. And this resolution is for, you know, Region 3 grant funds administered by CROG. This is something that we have done the last couple of years, and it provides some additional resources to our police and environmental services in case of disaster relief.
Right, so if someone could just do me a favor and read the motion, it does say there is a motion, so if we could read that, that would be helpful. Go ahead, Stephanie. I'm sorry, counselor, Stephanie.
This resolution is required from each municipality by the Department of Homeland Security in order to access regional homeland security grant funds. This resolution is for DEMHS Region 3 grant funds administered by CROG. Over the years, these grants have enabled Region 3 to carry out many projects, including planning, equipment, training, and exercises for all of the regional purpose teams, as well as personal productive equipment to first responders. In the resolution, that the town of Bloomfield may enter into with and deliver to the state of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, any and all documents which is deemed to be necessary and appropriate, and further resolve that Robert E. Smith, as town manager of the town of Bloomfield, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the town of Bloomfield, and to do and perform all acts and things which he seems to be necessary, he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents. The first... The further, the undersigned further certifies that Robert E. Smith now holds the office of Town Manager, and that he has held that office since August 31 of 2019.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. 1920 dash 25, consider and take action regarding appointment of the Town Attorney. Is there a motion on the floor?
Madam Mayor?
Counselor De La Riza.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to make a motion that the Town Council appoint Mark Needleman in the offices of Ryan and Ryan as our Town Attorneys for the next term, for this term, which runs till 2021.
Discussion?
Yes. Just to get into, I just want to have a little discussion here, because I know back in 2017, when this council, at least a majority of the members in this council, we talked about whether or not we want to get away from a political appointment and refer to, you know, an RFP, go through a process. And we all went through that exercise, we invested money, we spent time and resources, we went through the entire 2018, discussing this through 2019. I think at this point, what I would like to do is for us to refer this to committee to discuss it. I believe that, I would say, based on my experience, it should remain a political appointment. And before we appoint anyone, we should discuss, you know, rates and certain criterias, instead of just automatically just going ahead and making an appointment. So if my colleague could amend that motion to refer this to admin education to discuss, I think would be the right approach.
Is there a friendly amendment, Counselor De La Riza?
Yes, I'll agree to the friendly amendment, refer to admin and education for further discussion with regard to the costs involved and the fees for the attorney.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? This item has been referred to admin and education, and the vote was unanimous. 1920 dash 26, consider and take action regarding appointment of the Town Treasurer. Is there a motion on the floor?
Madam Mayor, I would also move that we refer this to admin education to have discussion on the floor.
I have a second. Is there any discussions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? This item has been referred to admin and education, and the vote was unanimous. Consider and take action regarding tax refunds?
Madam Mayor? We have a memo from the Finance Director, Carrie Rowley, submitting a list of refunds. She gives various pieces of information about the refunds that are over $1,000. This appears to be all in order, so I would move, I would recommend that these refunds be approved.
Is this, all in favor, any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? It has been voted to take the tax refunds and approve them, and that was a unanimous vote. At this time, we will have a report from our Town Manager.
Mayor, in the interest, mayor, in the interest of the holiday week, we'll be closing our offices early this week, and in the interest of brevity, I will yield the floor.
All right, all right. Mr. Smith, just two quick things from the mayor's report. We did have a very good conversation with Governor Susan Bysiewicz on Friday, talking about the 2020 census and the importance of the census. We will be having, giving more information on that as time goes by, but please get in gear for the census. It's important that we all are counted. This affects our federal funds, it affects our redistricting, it affects the representatives that we do have speaking on our behalf, so it affects a lot of things. So please be mindful, once again, there will be more information session about this. We did have our interfaith Thanksgiving service on yesterday, hosted at the Congregational Church in Bloomfield, so I do want to just say a special thank you to Pastor Sean and his congregation, and all the other faith leaders that came out. It was a very good service, well-attended. Some of our councils were there, our Town Manager was there as well, so thank you to that. At this time, we will have our financial report. Carrie?
Okay, so just to touch base for October, so far, tax collection rate is good. We are above what we were last year at 62.7%. We received our first payment of the ECS grant, it was $1.35 million. Breeding and demo permits, having a very good year so far, $780,000 we've collected, which is about 91% of the budget. The budget's $850,000 for the year. We received a large permit from Cigna for $260,000, which I think obviously helped those figures, but even with that aside, we'd still be having a good year. Ambulance revenue is trending down about $30,000. We should be at about $160,000. We are only at $130,000. So I decreased the projection about $41,000 to date. Real estate convenience is also starting off strong. We've collected 42.2% of the projected revenue. It's really hard to project or trend this account, so I'm leaving it as is, and based on how November and December play off will increase accordingly. Our expenditures are doing good, we're at 31.1%. We should be about 33.3%, and those include encumbrances. If I take those out and we just focus on expenditures, we'd only be at about 28.2%. I didn't change any of the expenditure budgets yet. I do believe I probably will, but probably not until the fourth quarter. So, any questions? Counselor De La Riza?
Yes, can I just make one comment, because the MDC came in tonight? Because I just took a quick look. Everyone remembers the MDC's fiscal year's calendar basis. Ours is a July 1st to June 30th basis. I took a look at what we had in the projection for the year, because I, I think what we normally do is take the last two quarters, they, that would be part of our budget, that they're already budgeted. We up that by some amount, I don't know what your algorithm is, but it looked like if the MDC budget is adjusted, we would be about $80,000 short there.
For this year?
Yeah.
So they do calendar year, we do fiscal year, but we keep the, they keep the second or the two, they keep the first, so they keep the first two of their calendar year equal to, they do a certain formula, so we'll...
Oh, okay.
Right, yeah, so it doesn't affect ours.
We'll catch up then.
Right.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Can I have a motion for the approval of the minutes for the November 12 meeting?
Second.
Any discussions? Any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The approval for the November 12?
Down there, I was saying?
One abstention.
I wasn't here.
Yeah, so only one abstention, so the minutes have passed with one abstention. At this time, we will have council comments, and we will start with our new distinguished counselor to my right, Mr. Politis.
Don't have much to say tonight, just the holiday parade is a nice event, and I would just welcome everybody to come out and check it out, it's a lot of fun.
Counselor Goff?
Hi, yeah, and I'm very happy to move around, and it's nice we've still kept the distribution of Democrats and Republicans, because we're one community. Few things, I attended the community dinner, the community lunch, Thanksgiving dinner at the First Congregational Church, along with a number of my colleagues. That was a wonderful event, and I, they do it every week, not as, not as big of detail, but anyone can go and help, and it's a very great time, and you meet some wonderful people. Obviously, happy Thanksgiving to everybody, that's coming up. We had a lot of discussion about the MDC tonight, and I also want to, I want to sort of combine that a little bit with Mr. Pleasant's comments. We get very hung up and thinking about the 14% increase, or the, you know, what's happening with this part of the Clean Water Project charge, and all of those things, and they're important, those details are important. But Mr. Pleasant raised an important idea, and I really wish the MDC would try to start thinking outside the box, because as has been pointed out, it's our water system, we obviously can't let it fail. We get gray water, but we're going to have to do something to solve these escalating costs. And part of this is, we have a water system that was built, was started in the 19 teens, twenties, and it was built for a growing population and growing industrial state, and that has moved the other way. We've shifted to a different period of time. So, we have to start thinking of a different model to make this work. And one thing that I get very frustrated with the MDC coming in every year, is their, their only solution seems to be, how do we get more? How do we sell more? How do we do these things? And they need, they need to think outside the box. As, as Mr. Pleasant points, so do we. We need to think about the long-term, long-term, where we're going to go to have a very healthy, healthy, happy, thriving community in five, 10, 15 years. So, I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Counselor Murray?
It's hard to argue with that, and I won't, I agree, and I would wish everybody a happy turkey.
Counselor Calhoun?
Good evening, everyone, and I wish everyone a safe and happy and filling Thanksgiving. I'm going to challenge all of our Bloomfield neighbors, if you don't know your neighbor, please stop, knock on their door, introduce yourself. Check on your neighbors. We have some seniors, we have young people, we are, we have a disconnect still. We have new people coming into town. Please introduce, we are one community, introduce yourselves, and thank you.
Counselor Curtin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also want to echo happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I also attended the food kitchen and volunteer for the Thanksgiving Dinner, and I would like to encourage residents to go by there Saturday morning, they start roughly around 11:30. But if you're looking for a challenge like I did, I got there early and to part in their kitchen, and to help, you know, in whatever ways, and you had students who volunteered from the Manchester Community College, from the Culinary Department, and these kids, I mean, they were roughly around, I would say, 10 or so who came out, and they were excited, they were happy, they were having fun, and giving back to the community. They don't get credit for it, they don't get paid for it, this is strictly voluntary service, and those young folks, it was ranging from 18 to 21. They came out and they all worked together, collaborated, and it was, it was a ball of fun. It was an accident, me being there that early, I thought it started at nine o'clock, but it was really rewarding, being there and helping out in the kitchen with them. So I would encourage residents, if you have time, to go out. And what was surprising, you didn't just have folks from Bloomfield, folks came from Windsor to, to take part in the meal. So that, that place do a lot of good things for the residents of Bloomfield and surrounding towns. And I just want to, you know, say, just take an opportunity to go by and take part, and thank you, and have a good evening.
Counselor De La Riza?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, good evening, everybody, and I am happy to be back. So I do want to thank all the citizens of Bloomfield for going out and voting, and I do want to thank everybody for their support. I did receive a lot of support from the residents, and I do appreciate that, and I appreciate your vote of confidence. And I do hope to do a lot of good things over the next two years, and I look forward to serving the residents for the next two years. So thank you for that opportunity again. Also, I just wanted to say, just adding on to the comments tonight, you know, it is Thanksgiving, it's a time for giving, and I did want to mention that, you know, we have neighbors who might need our help, so please feel free to give to the Bloomfield Food Bank, and, you know, there's also the Basket, I believe, that Social Services is sponsoring, you can also do that as well. So please help out if you can, and I hope everybody has a happy, safe, restful Thanksgiving. Thank you, good night.
Counselor Wong?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening. I also attended the Thanksgiving Community Meal this past Saturday with some of our colleagues. I caught a really cute picture of Counselor Curtin in the kitchen baking cookies, so check out that. Amongst other colleagues, too. So that was a really nice event. Also, we do have a new principal that started at Laurel Elementary School. There is a meet and greet on Tuesday, December 3 at 6:00 PM, for anyone who wants to meet the new principal. And I will end my comments with some quotes. "It's not so much we have in this life that matters, it's what we do with what we have", Mr. Rogers. "Sometimes the right path isn't always the easiest", Pocahontas. "And in light of water, when the well ones dry, we know the worth of water", Benjamin Franklin. Thank you.
Counselor Man?
Well, I also want to reiterate about the program at the Congregational Church, the feeding program for community, because, and a few other people mentioned it, it's one of those examples where we can all participate in helping others and feeling a part of community that we all say, well, where's the community anyway? We are the community, and we have to show up, and that's really what the key of this is all about, helping others. And I was speaking to Lucy Hurston, she said they gave out a record number of lunches at that, well over 300. They've never served that many at once, but, so it's very exciting. It's happening right here in our own town. So please, take part in it. It's a good Thanksgiving message, and you don't have to wait another year to participate either. There's still opportunities to give food and turkeys to the food share, they're not completely filled their quota yet. And as well, the Congregational Church, along with the Hobbit Church and, and the Cathedral, are working together on the Backpack Program to feed some of our lower-income students, people who don't get enough for breakfast and lunches, and they're doing a terrific job. That's another way we all can help. If we take some of our funds or some of our time, come out and help, that's the key. Now, finally, a shout out to the Prosser Library, who's putting on a Toni Morrison Remembers documentary celebration on December 4 at 6 o'clock at Prosser Library. I encourage all people to show up, it's quite a good documentary, and I'm looking forward to seeing it myself. So, thank you, and everybody enjoy a happy Thanksgiving.
So, one of the things that we talked about yesterday at the interfaith service is being able to come together as a community, that there's a lot of people that wants to divide us with things that are true, things that aren't true, and things that are made up. So during this season of Thanksgiving, if we can be thankful that we live in a very diverse community like Bloomfield, and give thanks for your fellow man, right? We may not see the eye to eye, we may not have tea together, we may not go out shopping together, but because we are here together, that's something to be thankful for. So that message really resonated with me on yesterday, being able to appreciate everyone for who they are, good, bad, or indifferent, and being thankful that we're all here to experience life together. I also just want to make a little correction on the Backpack Program. The Backpack Program helps students over the weekend, not just the students, but also their families. And on a monthly basis, the church has a staple that they would like to collect. So this month, it's a mountain of mac and cheese and a tower of tuna. So they're collecting macaroni and cheese and tuna, so if you are out shopping late, like I am, for Thanksgiving, and you see macaroni and cheese on sale or tuna on sale, pick up an extra couple boxes, pick up an extra couple tins, and please donate to the Congregational Church. Also, I know that it's not that far off, because I'm already hearing the songs, it's the most wonderful... wonderful time of the year, Christmas is coming, and I know that social and youth services usually sponsor children. So, once again, just, just spread the love, be thankful for what you have and share that with your neighbor. I know that Mr. Pleasant talked about plans and what we're looking at in five and ten and fifteen years. Mr. Pleasant, we're going to try to plan for the next eighteen months and see how that works. I know that our Town Manager has already started some of those things, some SWOT analysis and things like that. The council will be having their council retreat and we'll be talking about different things that we would like to see. And we'll be mindful to keep our residents up to speed, to know what the path is so that you can help us to stay on track, kind of like get us back in line if we fall off track, so we will be sharing that. So, I think we're all excited about the next two years and about doing some really, really, really good work for this our, our town of Bloomfield. I'd like to thank all those who came out, mostly for those who stayed to the end because I believe that those are the real MVPs. At this time, can I please have a motion?
Show me, Madam Mayor.
Is there a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.